Go ahead and call the August 9th regular meeting. Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome on a lovely rainy night. Um, Kelly, roll call.
Kimball?
Present.
Davis?
Here.
Keen?
Here.
Latham?
Here.
Wilder?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Let the record show that all commissioners are present with the exception of Vicky Jo Carey, who is excused.
All right, staff, any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No, there isn't.
No amendments? Ceremonies, appointments, announcements, and presentations. John, do we have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring attention that the city council did approve a change to the public hearing procedures. So what that change included was the staff will be doing the introduction along with the staff report prior to the applicant, and then after that, there'll be the public speaking in favor, of which it got increased from three minutes to four minutes, then the public speaking of neutral with four minutes, and then the public speaking in opposition of four minutes also. So there's an increase in the time and a little bit of the order, so that'll be taking into effect this evening.
Perfect, all right. Thank you, sir. Any declaration of conflict this evening?
I do have a conflict on the final two new business items tonight, so I won't be participating in those.
And I have a conflict on the final item. It's the Tullamore Phase 2C PUD. That's the number four, or the fourth item.
Three, four, and four. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. John, do you want to take us through consent calendar?
Yeah, item A is the minutes from the July 12, 2016 Planning and Zoning Meeting, and item B is the T2O subdivision, findings of decision.
I move to approve as presented.
Too slow. Moved and seconded.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Wonderful. Citizen issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that are not on the agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meetings and agendas should be held for those meetings when they occur. Is, uh, any citizen issues, citizen comment this evening? All right. None being said, moving on, we have no unfinished or old business, if I'm correct. So that will take us right into the public hearing. Again, we're getting ready to start the public hearing. If you would like to speak or comment on the public hearing, make sure that you fill out the comment sheet in the back of the podium and bring it up to Kelly up front. And that being said, we will go ahead and open Greens Ferry Annexation A-16-04. John Manley to present.
Good evening, Chairman Davis and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Greens Ferry Annexation, case file A-16-04. Property owner is Luis Scott, and the applicant's rep is Lake City Engineering. The requested action is to review the annexation request, determine that the requested single-family residential R1 zoning conforms to the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, and make a recommendation of approval for the requested R1 zoning designation to city council. This is a little bit of difference from maybe some of you with past experience. In the past, there was a recommendation for the annexation. It's been determined that the Planning and Zoning Commission's role is to review the zoning element of the annexation proposal, with the city council will actually review the annexation piece of that with the recommendation of zoning before them at that time. Is there any questions?
So to clarify, our job is to just recommend the zoning and not whether or not it should or should not be annexed?
Yeah, reviewing if the requested zoning is, meets more or less what the request is for our comprehensive plan, future land use map, and everything else that's going to be presented within the staff report.
Okay.
So the project location and zoning, as you see here, is on the southeast corner of 16th Avenue and Greens Ferry Road. It's just west of Highway 41 and a bit north of Mullen Avenue to the south. Future land use map, as you see here, this is an excerpt from the whole entire city, but you can kind of see here, the yellow, that's the residential, that predominantly in this whole area here, it's designated as a residential area for future development, either in the county or within the city of Post Falls. What you see here on the black line, that's the city limits currently. The request is on a 4.3 acre piece approximately. Current land use is single-family residential. The proposed zoning, as stated in the intro, is single-family residential, R1. The water provider for this area would be the East Green Acres Irrigation District, with the sewer being provided by the city of Post Falls. Planning Division reviewed this and found that it was consistent with policies within the Comprehensive Plan. A full analysis was in the staff report on the policies of consistency. As stated previously, it's consistent with the future land use map. It's within the Post Falls area city impact. It's contiguous with the city limits, and the R1 zoning designation is consistent with the surrounding areas. Did want to highlight some of the policies, though, that are consistent. Land to be annexed should enable a completion of a continuation of pedestrian network that connects neighborhoods to amenities and activity centers throughout the community. So, in looking at this location, being on the southeast corner, getting this annexed with the improvements on an important corner, will be a valuable aspect to this proposal. Another aspect is when service needs can properly be addressed, priority should be given to annexing infill pockets that are surrounded by incorporated cities and lands that have utility infrastructure readily available, and areas that support the development pattern of increased intensity near the urban core. So as stated, this is fairly close to Mullen Avenue, Highway 41. This is in a, what would be considered, a fairly large county pocket. We have gotten recently annexed this piece over here near Idaho Road. We also have a proposal, young annexation at this location, so this county pocket is potentially a liability long-term, so getting any infill developments is important and critical to the city of Post Falls. The residential policies is that most ordinary activities should occur within a walking distance of most residences, allowing a measure of independence to those who do not drive. So as I mentioned, the proximity to Mullen Avenue and Highway 41, residences at this location would meet this residential policy point. Also throughout the community, a range of housing types and price levels should be provided to accommodate diverse ages and incomes and provide effective, affordable housing. You find that throughout Post Falls in varying degrees of single-family homes, that they tend to meet a wide range of price levels for individuals that reside in Post Falls. Engineering Division commented, in regards to the transportation aspect, is that the proposed land use is in conformance with anticipated development utilized in establishments of the Transportation Master Plan. In regards to the water reclamation, the sanitary sewer is available, the city of Post Falls has the capacity and able to serve the requested zoning. We do want to highlight, though, that existing capacity is not a guarantee of future service, so a lot of, the reason for this point is you annexed it in 15, 10, 20 years down the road, if it sits, depending on what happens with the wastewater treatment facility, may or may not be able to serve depending on the status of that facility. Domestic water, and that's, would be provided by the Ross Point Water District. Idaho Department of Lands commented and found that there'd be no issues with this proposed annexation request. So I would conclude staff report prior to the applicant. Do you have any questions for me at this time with the proposed annexation?
Anything for John?
No. All right, thank you.
All right, applicant presentation. Mr. Ditman, welcome.
Chairman Davis, fellow commissioners, most of you know me, or all of you know me, but for the record, Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 Schreiber Way, city of Coeur d'Alene. I like the new format, makes my job easier when John gives a presentation. Straightforward annexation, surrounded mostly by residential property currently in the city of Post Falls. Obviously, it's in that large county pocket. Recent subdivisions across the street, the Greens Ferry Grove Project, the Viking Estates Project, so seems to be a logical extension of the city, and I understand why it's coming in for annexation, given those developments. Five-acre parcel, four-and-a-half-acre parcel, requesting R1. Utilities are currently to the site, either in Greens Ferry Road or 16th Avenue, and I don't think there's any major issues, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. No. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kelly, testimony. Do we have any testimony in favor?
We do not.
Do we have any neutral?
We do not.
Any opposed?
We do not.
Then there is no reason for rebuttal, so we will move forward to questions for staff. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? All right, none being said, we'll go ahead and close the Greens Ferry Annexation public hearing and begin discussion. Start with you, Nancy.
I think it makes sense. It's a pocket, it's infill, and it's certainly residential housing would fit there.
Yeah, I agree. I think that if we're voting on whether it should be R1, I would say that that's a logical zoning for annexation.
Yep, me too. It's bounded on three sides by R1, so that's pretty logical, and it is a pocket.
Agreed?
Yeah, I think R1's appropriate. Really, I think any of the residential zones would be appropriate there. It's at an intersection of a major collector, or a collector and a arterial or major collector, so really, any one of the three would probably be appropriate, and R1 seems fine if that's what the applicant wants.
Yeah, I would agree that it fits in really nicely, and especially takes in some of that infill of county property into the Post Falls, city limits.
Absolutely. It's always good to see infill. All right. If that be the case, then I would entertain a motion from someone.
I'll give it a shot.
I was going to say, I'll entertain a motion from anyone.
(laughing) Pregnant pause. I would move to forward this on to city council with a recommendation for R1 zoning.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Kelly?
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. All right, moving right along with the second public hearing this evening, we'll go ahead and call the Jacobson Addition Subdivision S-16-13 to order. Tavas to present.
Good evening, commissioners. Tavas Schmidt, planner with city of Post Falls. I'm presenting the Jacobson subdivision, case file S-16-03. The applicant owner is Bruce Jacobson, and the requested action tonight is that the Planning and Zoning Commission being asked to review the subdivision request and make a recommendation of approval to the city council, along with appropriate conditions if necessary. The project is located on Syringa Street, about 850 feet south of Pole Line Avenue and north of 16th. The property size is approximately 6.3 acres. Currently, it's single-family residential, and it's zoned R1. There's no significant topology or vegetation on the property. The water and sewer is provided by the city of Post Falls. The proposal is for 25 single-family residential lots with an average lot size of 6,780 square feet. That works out to a density of just under four units per acre, 3.97. There's going to be proposed extensions of existing streets. We've got Yellowstone Avenue that will connect to Syringa Street, and Mariah Drive, which currently is dead ends, and it will go north a little bit further. This map shows the surrounding zoning. We've got, all the yellow is single-family, R1. We've got the white is county pocket, and then we've got some SC3 and SC4, just a little bit to the east. This is the subdivision preliminary plat, so we've got Yellowstone Ave currently terminates right here, and so this will be an extension connecting it easterly to Syringa. And then in the Windsong Addition, we've got a little stub of Mariah, Mariah Drive, and so this proposed subdivision will continue Mariah Drive northward, and then it will just continue, it will terminate there, allowing access to a future development on the property to the north. The proposed subdivision meets the policies and goals of the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, and within the municipal code Title 17, there are six criteria for subdivision review. And the first one is about provisions for water supply. City Post Falls is the water purveyor, and there's adequate capacity, and the preliminary layout is acceptable. The second criteria is that there's adequate provisions for a public sewage system. The city of Post Falls has adequate capacity to provide service to this subdivision, layout's adequate, and any existing homes will be required to connect at time of development. Third one is that the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan. Roadway alignment and cross-sections are appropriate, and there's some potential minor changes that I'll discuss on the next slide. There's going to be no direct access from the subdivision lots to Syringa Street. They'll be limited to Yellowstone Avenue or Mariah Drive. The layout accommodates the connectivity. So at the very western side of the proposed subdivision, we've just got a little bit of a jog here with the existing Yellowstone Avenue and kind of there, and so staff will, wants to add that as a recommendation to discuss the development during construction for conformance with city standards. The number four subdivision review criteria is that any soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified, and there's no soil or topographical conditions that present hazards on this property. Number five, the proposed subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and it conforms to other requirements found within the municipal code. The property is zoned, single-family residential, R1. All the lots meet or exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards, and the density is under what is allowed within that zone. And number six is that there's adequate plans have been made to make sure that the community is not going to bear any more than its fair share of costs to provide services to the proposed subdivision, so annexation and impact fees will be paid upon building permit issuance. We received comments from Cootney Fire and Idaho Department of Lands, that they had no comments. And do you have any comments or questions for staff?
I just had one question slash comment. I know there was some discussion, I believe it was number three, with the connectivity on Yellowstone, and you'd mentioned that wanting to have a condition in there. Is it adequate for us on condition three that says, final construction plans and street utilities shall be reviewed upon the engineering division prior to any street utility construction? Do we need to include specifically Yellowstone to Syringa within that? Would that take care of that?
Adding, that would help assist in adding clarity on that one connection between where it leaves Singing Hills into this proposed subdivision, that connection that, at the time of working on the construction plans, that we would get a smooth transition there, potentially. The code may allow it, the way it's presented, but there may need to be further analysis on that transition point.
Okay, so specify on condition three. Perfect. That was the only thing I had. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Applicant presentation.
Robert Tate with Tate Engineering, 1625 North Fourth, Coeur d'Alene. My goal tonight is to be even more brief than Drew. In review of the preliminary plat and the staff report, we have no objections to any of the conditions that have come up through the staff review, you know, in light of the transition on Yellowstone Avenue. Yeah, that intersection does need to, or that transition needs to be designed, a radius put in there so that we can make that an effective transition. We have no objection to that. That is normally a process that is handled through the engineering department when they review the construction plans. I really don't know if any extra condition needs to be added because that is, that's part of their process. Other than that, I'll stand for questions. I think I beat him.
Questions? Excellent. All right, thank you very much. Testimony. Kelly, any in favor this evening?
We do not.
Any neutral?
We do not.
Any opposed?
Do not.
All right. Any questions for staff before we close things out? No questions? Then we'll go ahead and close the annexation, Jacobson Annexation subdivision, or Addition Subdivision S-16-03, and open it up for questions. Warren, let's start with you over here.
I think it's a good plan and a good plan, and I think the transition zone would be appropriate, and I think it fills in nicely.
Yeah, it's a great little infill. It's nice that they're providing connectivity both north, south, east, and west, and really with regard to the street, I think condition number five probably takes care of it, where it says, except where an exception is granted, all street lights and roadways shall be designed and constructed in accordance with city standards. That should give the city staff enough to leverage to make sure that that connection is designed appropriately. And then, so I think it's, I think it's fine as presented.
Mark?
Yeah, no, it's a good project. It connects everything, and contrary to, you know, a month or two ago, when there was some people that were really concerned about the additional traffic coming through on their pre-existing roads, this is the opposite. This will, there'll be some traffic coming through on this development from the existing Singing Hills, but it'll get that good connectivity and make it a little more orientation-wise easy to get through that development, I think. And it's right near a couple parks, and it just kind of ties everything together. It's great.
Darrell?
I agree.
Nothing to add?
Nancy?
I agree as well.
Okay. Sounds like everybody's on the same page, so Jacobson Addition subdivision, I said annexation, but it is a subdivision, so we'd go ahead at this time and entertain a motion. Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
I don't always need to do it.
There you go. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Jacobson Addition subdivision S-16-03 as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion put forth, seconded. Kelly?
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so that closes out the public hearings this evening, and we will move on to the next item, new business. Two pieces of new business to discuss tonight. The first one is North Place Phase 1 Final PUD, PF-16-01. John to present.
The applicant is the Schneider Brothers, Inc. Requested action is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and approve the proposed North Place Phase 1 Final PUD of approximately 17 acres. And how the process is, is you have a preliminary PUD that's approved, that's the public hearing procedures where you go all the way through council, where you look at the big project, where you're looking at the final PUD, that's generally a piece of the big overall picture, and you're seeing if that's in conformance or overall in conformance with the original preliminary PUD. So the project location is as you see here in the Red Hatch along Idaho Road here, just west of what would be the Fieldstone subdivision, south of Prairie, and north of Pole Line. The Gulf, Post Falls Golf Course encompasses it predominantly to the west, southwest and north. The zoning in the area, as you see here, the yellow is the R1 single-family residential, that is the predominant zone in this area. The acreage is approximately 17 acres, and they're proposing 55 single-family residential lots, and the comp plan designates this as being residential. Current land use is undeveloped ag land. The water provider would be the city of Post Falls, and the sewer would be provided by the city of Post Falls as well. And looking at the Post Falls Municipal Code, and looking at the review criteria for this, it states that the final PUD proposal may be denied if the project is found not to meet the following. The first one is that the final PUD or individual phase of the PUD can exist as an independent unit, or that adequate assurance will be provided that such objective will be attained. Individual phases of any such development must conform to the overall density and use considerations as approved in the preliminary PUD and recorded in the development agreement. Sorry for all the language, but that's the criteria. So looking at the review of that is, the original proposal was for 167 residential lots. They're proposing 55. The associated infrastructure is consistent with the original proposal for this phase and can facilitate the preliminary PUD. Proposed 3.18, that's lots per acre, or dwelling units per acre, that's also consistent, as it was originally approved for 4.23 lots per acre, so there's a little bit of reduction in density to the approved preliminary PUD. It's also less than the R1 zoning district, which allows five units per acre. This project, as presented, can stand as an independent phase. Second criteria is that any exceptions from standard district requirements is warranted by the merits of the design and amenities incorporated in the final development plans and in accordance with the approved preliminary PUD and any adopted policies of city council. So in this, there were kind of three exceptions or modifications. They were minor. If they were perceived to be major, we more than likely would have kicked them into amending the preliminary PUD to then come back with the final PUD, but these are minor proposals, and they were to shift the phase boundary, change the lot sizes and orientation to the proposed Brigham Street, and change in road cross-sections. And I'll go into this here, is, so here's the phase boundary. You can see how the road alignment that they're proposing, there is really no change from on the left, what you see is the preliminary PUD, and on the right is the proposal, but you see how they're proposing to kind of finish out this area, that was, the phase boundary was going to be cut back here, so that's more or less a minor little change, consistent with what was originally approved. The other proposal, and I apologize, in your staff report, a lot of these lines didn't come in, you couldn't really read them, so I kind of darkened these up a bit. come in, you couldn't really read them, so I kind of darkened these up a bit, so you can kind of see the lot orientation here, how the original PUD showed the lots going east-west, and this is Brigham Street, and over here, they're going north-south. Also, you can notice that the lot sizes increased, hence that decrease in lot density. The other is the cross-sections. Per the preliminary PUD, you see how the, the road cross-sections for the interior streets was for fifty-five foot in width, and the, for North Place Avenue was fifty-eight feet. What they're proposing for this final PUD is a three-foot increase, so it's going to go to fifty-four, it's gonna go to fifty-seven, and the fifty-eight would be two sixty-one. What's causing that is, and I apologize for kind of the scan and the non-legible aspect of this cross-section, is in the, these were five-foot planting strips in the preliminary PUD, and what's being proposed are six-foot planting strips. And then the other difference is a balance of some easement, utility easement applications within this cross-section. So overall, pretty minor changes to what was originally proposed. And lastly, for the third one, is the existing and proposed utility services are adequate for the uses proposed. So as stated is that the transportation layout is consistent with the approved preliminary PUD, and that the utility services will be adequate for the proposed PUD and subdivision. So all the criteria is being met for this final PUD. So I'd stand for questions you have for me regarding this proposal.
Any questions for John? Okay, since it is new business, I would entertain a motion at this time then. And Ray can't do it.
Okay, I will move to approve the North Place, the North Place Phase One Final PUD, adopting the findings and conclusions and conditions one through three contained in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, Kelly?
Davis?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Last item on the new business this evening is Tulmore Phase Two C Final PUD PF dash one six dash zero two. John, one more time.
Yeah, so this Tulmore Phase Two, Two C Final PUD, the owner of this project is Copper Basin, Inc. The applicant's rep is Lake City Engineering, and the requested action is to review and approve a proposed Tulmore Phase Two C Final PUD of approximately twenty-two acres. You can see here the project location of this proposal here, in the red hatched boxed area, or semi-box. Here you see the zoning in relation to the proposed Final PUD area. As stated, the approximately twenty-two acres with fifty-seven single-family residential lots being proposed, Comprehensive Plan designates this area as being residential. It's currently undeveloped vacant land. Water provider would be the Ross Point Water District, sewer being provided by City Post The final PUD proposal may be denied if the project is not found to meet the following as stated Post Falls Municipal Code eighteen dot two zero dot zero eight zero. So similar to the last one, you're looking at, can it stand on an independent phase? Can it conform to the overall density? And there's the overall road layout, and what's similarities to the preliminary PUD. So the original Tulmore Preliminary PUD, it didn't really have necessarily the density, but it did have a total number of lots, and it had three hundred and eighty-three residential lots approved in certain areas of this PUD, and this is an area that was slated for a single-family residential. Currently, two hundred and thirty-three lots have been developed with this proposed fifty-seven, that would bring two ninety, so they'd still be under the approved limit by approximately ninety-three. The proposed associated infrastructure is consistent with the preliminary PUD, and the two point six one lots would be consistent with the zoning district, and as stated, the lot counts and the two point six one lots per acre would also be consistent. This phase can stand as an independent phase. There were some exceptions sought, though, for this. One of them was, they wanted the proposal to be developed in two plats rather than a single plat with Two C. We talked a little bit about two phases or two plats. It was clear because it's Phase Two C, did not have sub-phases to deal with the two sub-plats. So what it would look like is plat one you'd see in blue here, and plat two in green, and so what the two, they add up to the total area for Phase Two C. And I'll show that here a little bit as we progress through these images, and how we have this phasing plan. So what you see here on the left, this is the mostly developed area, or which has developed in Tulmore with the road infrastructure, and you can kind of pick out the rooftops and the houses and the developing area of Two B. Two B is denoted at this location in the red text. Two C is as you see here, and I'll get in a little bit closer here in a minute. Once again, I apologize for the small text, as a means to reduce the slide count, but the point of this slide is to say that there's numerous blocks and phases with this plan, and there's infrastructure tied to each phase. So specifically dealing with Two C, as you see here, that Phase Two C calls out Cecil Road from Hope Avenue to Killdeer, and this is Hope Avenue, Charville Road from Hope Avenue to Killdeer, and for Killdeer Lane between the two to be improved with Phase Two C. So those are the main, that's the meat and potatoes of the conditions for this phase. So when it came to looking at the plats, as long as those conditions were met, then two plats was considered more of a minor detail, and that you're being consistent, more or less consistent with that phase. Therefore, didn't trigger a major amendment to the preliminary PUD. The other item is that the existing and proposed, proposed utility services are adequate for the uses proposed, and for the staff comment was that transportation layout is consistent with the approved preliminary PUD, and the utility services will be adequate for the proposed PUD and subdivision. So I'd have any questions for me at this time regarding what was proposed, either in the staff report or what's been presented?
Nancy, Daryl, Warren?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in regards to Tulmore Phase Two C Final PUD, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I will move to approve the Tulmore Phase Two C Final PUD, adopting the findings and conclusions and conditions one through four contained in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, Kelly?
Davis?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Wilder?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that closes out new business. Staff comments? Any staff comments at this time?
No additional comments.
No additional comments? Commission comments? Anything for the good of the order?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to staff for doing some of this housecleaning and housekeeping stuff on our procedures, and really just kind of working through this stuff to streamline everything for us and make it somewhat simpler. Thank you.
Yes, very well done. Anyone else? All right. Move to adjourn. We are adjourned.[1788.65]